I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. As you can see, we have a little bit different background than usual. We are under construction, so thank you for being here and tolerating our transitional period. With that, we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here. Brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of today's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of today's agenda as printed. Discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to ceremonial matters. Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce Teri Griffin, the Highway Administrator. She's here to present to information to the Commission of six of our employees who have received a milestone in their training, and so I'm going to turn it over to Teri. Thank you.
Teri Griffin, Highway Administrator. We're here today to recognize six Highway Department employees who have completed the requirements through the Missouri Technical, the Missouri Local Technical Assistance Scholars Program and reached their Level 1. The program is intended to enhance the skills of those involved in the maintenance, delivery, and management of local infrastructure with training aimed at increasing each participant's technical, maintenance, and administrative skills. Each of these men have completed three core courses in worker safety, work zone and flagger training, and communication skills, plus five elective courses in order to qualify as a Level 1 scholar. So today, we are recognizing Justin Elderbaum, Kenneth Ripley, David Omlund, Johnny House, Scott Franklin, and Greg Thomas. Each of these men will receive a certificate from the Missouri Technical Association and have also received a Carhartt jacket with the appropriate logos on it. So help, join me in congratulating these men on their accomplishment.
Yes, we'll go ahead and we will pause for a moment and take a photo, and then we will pick up our agenda from that point. By the way, congratulations, gentlemen. Very good. Thank you for working on keeping your training as up to date as possible. All right, very good. Thank you very much. That brings us to comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public on any issues? Very good, seeing none. That brings us to our immediate action, and as some of you may have noticed, our agenda is altered, reflecting the recent passage of an ordinance. As we begin with our immediate action agenda item, I'm going to turn it over to the Administrator to give explanation on this part of the new system that we are working under. Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioner. So those items on the immediate action agenda are those items that are of routine business items that the Commission can consider. What will happen is I will go through and introduce each one of the items. At the conclusion, staff is available if the Commission has any questions on any of the items that they would like additional explanation on. Certainly, the Commission can remove anything from the immediate action and have it considered separately at a later date, but if those items remaining on an immediate action will then be adopted and approved in one motion by the Commission. So I'll start by introducing the items on the Commission.
By the way, that would be at the conclusion of today's part of that agenda. At the end of the immediate action agenda, we will approve them, correct?
You will approve them as we conclude the immediate action section before you get to the regular agenda.
Correct. Yes, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first item on immediate action is approve the transfer of ownership of K-9 Sammy to her handler, David Allen. The second item for consideration is Resolution 2022-361 and 2022 Ordinance 36. Resolution approves the closeout of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program 1.0 and transfer the remaining cash from interest to the general fund. And then Ordinance 2022-36 does an appropriation and a revision to the budget based on that transfer. Resolution 2022-371 is the consideration of the transfer within a fund for the Sheriff's Department. Also has a companion ordinance of 2022-37 that also is a reappropriation and revision to the current year's budget to reflect those changes and includes addressing changes for the new positions that the Commission approved through the grant program. Resolution 2022-360 is approving the auditor's bond with Travelers Insurance in the amount of $1,023. This is an annual event. Approving the transfer within a fund for $30,000 in the general fund for the Planning and Zoning Department. This is to cover costs for contractual services due to staffing shortages and performing inspection services. 2022 Ordinance 35 is the renewal of authorizing the issuance of the amusement and recreation license by the county clerk. This is an annual ordinance that the Commission considers. Resolution 2022-356 is transfer within a fund. It is in the general fund in the information technology, moving funds from the telephone line item to cellular services in the amount of $9,000. Resolution 2022-353 is also transfer within a fund in the general fund for $20,000 to move from gas, natural gas, to the electrical line item. Resolution 2022-355 is approving a 2023 intergovernmental agreement with Mid-America Regional Council Solid Waste Management District Regional Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program in the amount of $16,793.70. Resolution 2022-377 is a consideration of transfer within a fund of the general fund in the amount of $500 in the Human Resources Department, moving funds from general office supplies to accounting and consulting services due to increased costs. Resolution 2022-378 is also a transfer within a fund in the amount of $3,000 in the general fund in the Human Resources Department, moving funds from the Employment and Credit Services to the Accounting and Consulting Services, again, to cover additional costs. And the final item on our immediate action agenda item today is Resolution 2022-380, approving the cancellation of Resolution 2020-97, the Declaration of State of Emergency. And with that, before the Board takes any action on the immediate action item, I would invite Captain Agderian to come forward and do some introductions. We have a special guest in the audience on our first item on the agenda of transferring ownership of K-9 Sammy to her handler, David Allen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. You notice we have some additional guests with us today. K-9 Sammy was born in 2013 and has been in service with the Sheriff's Office since 2015, and she has served with only one handler, David Allen, who has recently left our employment and has a new position with, is it Blue Springs?
Blue Springs School District.
Yeah, Blue Springs School District and Police Department, and so we wish him the best of luck there. K-9 Sammy has been deployed over 700 times in her career to recover persons, articles, and narcotics, and she has certified and recertified a total of nine times through the North American Police Work Dog Association. Sammy is nine years old now, and as most police K-9s work between eight and 10 years, she's at an age where we just don't feel like it's beneficial to her to reassign her to a new handler, and thus, the Sheriff's Office respectfully requests to transfer her ownership and all financial care to her handler, David Allen, so that she can live in retirement comfortably.
Thank you. I think we're all really appreciative of the services rendered by K-9 Sammy.
Sammy.
And her human partners. So it's, we appreciate the fact that, because sometimes you wonder what happens to service animals when they reach, when they get to the end of their life of service and go into the next phase, and it is great to know that she's going to a place where she's loved and she'll be taken care of. And, you know, I can't imagine breaking up that partnership in spite of the fact that you're no longer with the Sheriff's Department. That kind of a partnership is not one you dissolve.
No.
There's a special bond, I'm sure, that is hard to describe, and certainly, we appreciate, you know, the service of both of those individuals. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, no, I think Sammy has, I think it's safe to say that she has served her community well over the years, and it is, it's time for her to retire, and I hope she has a great retirement, and she has many comfy beds and good treats and tummy scratches, and, but feel free to come visit us up here anytime, so.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, yeah, no, just, you know, grateful for the service of Sammy and David, and, you know, best of luck to y'all on your next adventure in life.
Appreciate it. Does Sammy want to comment? I don't need to remind her to speak into the microphone. I think that was heard. Thank you very much. That's a very good story to start our meeting with. Want a picture?
Do you want us on there?
Yeah, let's go ahead and pause once again because, yeah. Let's let them get theirs, and then we'll go ahead and do ours.
I should have bought some treats. All I got is like gummies in my bag. I got good, I know, nothing for doggies, so.
Okay, so, a procedural question, Mr. Counselor. Do we need a motion to go ahead and discuss that further if somebody would like questions on other items, or does it really matter that much? I didn't think it did, but I thought as long as it's a new thing, I would ask.
I don't think there's a motion necessary. If anybody wishes to address any one of these individual items, they just would point to that one and say, do you have some questions? If not, a motion to approve the immediate action would be well taken as well.
Okay. I do have one I wanted to ask a little bit about, and that was the 12022-361 and the Ordinance 36 attached to that, which is the Rental Assistance Fund Program ending. And what I want to do is just maybe hear a little bit more, because it was a program that we really did, I think, engage in that did a lot of good to many people in our community, so, Mr. Auditor, do you have any, any kind of closing remarks as far as how the program went and how you feel it went, because you were obviously very instrumental in making sure that it went smoothly?
Sure, yeah, we have to. Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor, so Resolution 2022-361, essentially what that is, is to close out the ERAP 1.0 fund and sweep the entire cash balance to the general fund. We'll put it in the rainy day account in our reserves. It's only, you know, $3,283 and a penny. What that represents is interest earned on the funds from last year from the Treasurer's Office, as well as this year. That's what the following reappropriation is. And to close that out and submit the compliance report, close out to U.S. Treasury, yes, there is a, in that packet, there were some statistics as far as the ERAP 1.0 final numbers, and what it amounts to is essentially close to $3.3 million of assistance to those tenants in Clay County who are behind on their rent or utilities due to the pandemic, and 616 households, everyone under 80% of the area, area median income. That's really 1.0. I guess I can give a quick update, just since we're looking for some more information on where we are 2.0. That's our other rental plan program. That one is at close to $2.3 million distributed of the assistance, $2,295,167, and so that represents 93.7% of the ERAP 2.0. Basically, we only have $153,000 left in the ERAP 2.0, so that one is essentially close to being done as well. Yeah, as you recall, we initially got 40% of that grant and then had to voluntarily go seek the additional two rounds. I do think I should bring to Commission's attention, U.S. Treasury, you know, has transmitted and communicated with us that there is opportunity to seek additional funds, but that number isn't known. It's essentially put in a request, and then Treasury will see if you're eligible. You know, in weekly meetings with the partners, it does seem like assistance with the county has slowed from our rental programs, both by virtue of remaining funds available and just from what I have understood to be most of the assistance remaining and applications and EQ is in Kansas City, and they do have their own assistance and their own dollars from reallocated from the state of Missouri, as well as their own grants as well. So it would be, there is a deadline coming up for that, but it is my recommendation that, you know, we've had good success, close to $5.6 million dispersed on the rental program, and with 493 households in 2.0, 1,109 households that we've basically kept housed through the pandemic. And just with the compliance matters as far as had to be due to or during the pandemic, that is something I, with the long timeline of 2.0 going out until the end of September 30th to 25, what that looks like for us as far as with our outside auditors. So it's my recommendation, unless the Commission wants to, has any other thoughts, I will, you know, follow that, but to not seek any more assistance. But that, I did want to bring that up. I know it's not just about the 1.0 closeout, but as far as an overall update, I thought I would bring that up as well.
Thank you very much. What I wanted to kind of underscore was two, two things. One, the amount of money going into general fund is very, very small, which means that those funds were expended for the purpose which they were sought. And then secondarily, I want to acknowledge yourself, the Administrator, and staff for doing a great job on putting that together and making sure those funds got to where they needed, and, and the partnership that was forged with United Way and the other partners we had that helped to distribute that money and to make sure that it went to those indeed who were qualified and needed that assistance, and it was done properly. So I just wanted to commend everybody involved on a good job as we, as we, as I say, close out 1.0. I have no intention of removing anything like that. Like I said, I just wanted to underscore that. Any other Commissioner comments?
No, but thanks for the update. Thank you.
Same, I have no questions, but thank you for the update.
With that, are there any other, before I, before I ask for a motion on the approval of the immediate action agenda, is there any comment from a Commissioner on any of the items contained in the immediate action bundle?
Not from me, Commissioner, thank you.
No, thank you.
Is there a motion related to our immediate action agenda?
I move that we approve the immediate action agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the immediate action agenda as printed. Discussion, seeing none. Please call the roll. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to our regular agenda today, and the first item on that agenda is 2022-379. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-379 is consideration approving an agreement with Rapid Financial Solutions, and Treasurer Bob Nance is here to provide information to the Commission on the program.
Please proceed.
Treasurer Bob Nance, and thank you, Commission and Administrator. This is a contract with Rapid, and the proposal is to replace checks with debit cards as a way of helping things flow easier through the Clerk of Court's Office, the Auditor's Office, and the Treasurer's Office. What this agreement will do is streamline and make the process for paying jurors more efficient. The county is required to pay jurors per day, a certain per diem, and, and by the tax on the, or excuse me, the law on the number of days of service. And each juror would receive a card, and it would be debited to their account. This also would, it would save us money on check writing costs. It would also remove any estatements, and they would no longer would need to worry about any lost or stolen checks, unclaimed properties. Jurors will have their option on how they could receive that money. An example would be go to somewhere that does MasterCard, and that would be just like a credit card that they could use at any, any business that accepted MasterCard. Yeah, it would only cost 55 cents per each card, which is less expensive than the checks we're doing right now. Also, Rapid profit, if you want to, how do they profit? You know, when you use your credit card at a business, that business gets, has to pay 2% to the credit card company, and that's a way that they would receive their, their funding. And also, Rapid puts $10,000 in an account, and then when we finally have the amount that we're going to pay our jurors, that's when they get paid. We would, we would be the ones paying them. They would not debit our, our account, and we would pay them. And I've spoke with the auditor, and the auditor seemed to think this, this is something that will benefit us all, and I'm sure you probably have a question or two about this, so I'll open it up to the questions.
Thank you. This does sound like something that's beneficial. Appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't know if you have the numbers, but certainly, we, we have a pretty substantial number of people who serve on jury, so the, the scale of what we're doing here is really worth the, it sounds like to me it's worth the effort to do what we're, what we're contemplating doing. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, I don't have any questions. It sounds like a really, you know, smart proposal to me in terms of, obviously, I think we're moving past the physical check writing era and moving into a card era probably makes a lot of sense, I mean, especially if, you know, we have confidence that Rapid logistically can, can, you know, make this a smooth process, then I'm on board.
And they have contracts with other counties right now, so it's not, we're not the new one.
Good deal, thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, no, I have no questions. I think this seems like a really smart, smart thing moving forward, and especially if it's a cost-saving measure. 55 cents is cheaper than sending out a check and going through that process. I think it seems like a no-brainer.
And this also has been shared with Kami and Lee in the Clerk's off, or Court Clerk's Office, and we will certainly, once this is approved, Justin Miller will come out and give us the training we need to make sure it's efficient.
Any further comments? Any comments from any other individuals? Seeing none, I think this would work for consent if that's everybody's thought.
I'm comfortable with consent.
That's fine.
2022-379 will appear on consent at our next meeting. That brings us to two items that are grouped together, 2022 Ordinance 38 and 2022-372. Administrator?
2022 Ordinance 38 and Resolution 2022-372 are companion ordinances regarding the reappropriation and revision to the current budget and also of transferring funds, and the County Auditor is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor, so 2022 Ordinance 38 is essentially reappropriating the grant we previously discussed, the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. We did receive that money, the $50,000 after applying. Treasurer's Office received it, and so now, like I said, I come back to the Commission as far as determining how to use it. What's proposed here with the reappropriation is to put it in a general fund account because it's been received in the general fund, and then, as I'll outline, and I'll take that up at the same time with Resolution 2022-372, we'll take it from the general fund and move it to our, as proposed, if the Commission approves, to the 911 Fund, the Emergency Communications Fund 282. And the reason I bring that forth is it is an eligible expense under, under the guidance to essentially use it for governmental purposes, such as public services, and I do notice we do have a, an issue in our 911 Fund, essentially where we're having a cash shortfall. You know, we have revenues from landline phones in that fund, and then the rest is supplemented by the, by the general fund. And so effectively, we, you know, budgeted an as-needed amount, but we haven't received the anticipated revenue from the landline, you know, revenue in order to do that. So what would be proposed here is to put this in an expenditure account in a 911 Fund, pay one of Mark's bills, that's who we pay, Mid-America Regional Counselor, and that's another component of why we're rather short, is those costs keep going up, as they naturally do, and so what we would essentially do is pay one of those bills using this, and that would be something I could easily report to the U.S. Treasury of how we use this money. So open to other suggestions, if that is something that I'd recommend as a problem that we can resolve this year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Thompson?
No questions, thank you.
Thanks, no questions, thanks.
Any comments from anyone else present? Seeing none. Sounds like it's set again, if everybody's good with that.
I'm good with that.
Very well. 2022 Ordinance 38 and 2022-372 appear on consent agenda at our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-375. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-375 is consideration of approving a sole source vendor agreement with Southwest Cold Fire Law Enforcement LLC, fire, for fire suppression equipment for the Sheriff's Office, and Captain Agderian is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Captain Amy Agderian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request to approve sole source vendor status to Cold Fire Industries, and Cold Fire is a fire suppression system that we began, that we began work, well, the county, I say we as a, as a county, began working with, oh, probably six or seven years ago, and that came about through the work of the Safety Committee. And there are several offices within the county that utilize this product, and I just, the Sheriff's Office wanted to go ahead and pursue the sole source with them to make transactions with them a little bit easier, so that they, we were abiding by purchasing guidelines, and since this is a system used county-wide, we, because it affected us this time, in the timeliness of our bill pay, we wanted to bring this forward for your consideration. This is a system that's already deployed in many county vehicles and all of the Sheriff's Office fleet, so that's why we pursued sole source for them.
Okay. Questions or comments from the Commission?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay.
All right.
I don't have a problem with going consent on this, although since it's a sole-source vendor, I could see also going regular, so looking for guidance from the Commission.
I'm comfortable with consent.
Let's do the consent.
Very good. In that case, 2022-375 will be consent for our next meeting. Thank you. That brings us to 2022-370. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-370 is approve the Mastic and Crackville Maintenance Project with McDonald and Associates at the airport, and Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to provide information.
Good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, this is the formal acceptance of a proposal, but it's also heavily an update on this project. During a review in 2019 by MoDOT, it was noted that we had several areas that needed to be addressed, and they are rated on a scale, and we received a 62 out of 100 for the aprons, which are the areas where the planes go in and park, that area right outside, and the taxiways, which is the way you get to, to take to the runway, that this needed to be addressed, and these needed to be crack sealed. And if we did not proceed and do this, then at some point, we would be looking at, to do a complete overlay of $600,000 would be the expense for this project. So during the time of looking at this, it was put off due to COVID, so we didn't have the personnel, it was COVID time, so this project got delayed, even though it was cited in 2019. So at this time, we have the airport closed because we're doing the runway revitalization project, so we are not currently operating. We had the opportunity to piggyback with McConnell and Associates, who are actively just started a project for us at Parks, doing resurfacing, and they're currently working in the picnic arm right now. So their timing of when they needed to start at Parks, and what would be beneficial to the airport, since we already closed down, this was an approved vendor. We had the funding within the budget, and a PO was encumbered to pay this vendor. There was a decision made that it was to benefit the county if we did not have to delay this, we also have weather coming in on us, and do this later. If we could just go ahead and start now, the project is, it's been in progress, it is wrapping up, which means that we will also be able to open the airport as scheduled this coming Saturday, which is what all of our tenants and hangar leases were promised, so we're sticking to our original timeline. So this project has been in progress, and we will be wrapping it up, and I'm happy to answer any questions about proceeding with the crack seal and the Mastic project.
No, it sounds like a necessary and a needed project. I'm happy to see it going forward, and I'm happy to see it progressing. Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Any comments from anyone present? Seeing none, since this involves expenditure of money, regulars, agenda session, a regular agenda for next week, is that okay with everybody?
Works for me.
That's fine.
All right. That brings us to 2022-359. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-359 is consideration of approving and signing application and orders for processing agreements with Petro Pros and Acumera for our Parks Department, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. This request is for the approval and signature for the merchant processing and application agreements for both marinas at the parks. The point-of-sale system requires a managed network switch provider that is a PCI compliant firewall to protect sites from data breach. The service is required by our software provider, DoubleCheck, and the Petro Pros is a preferred card processor and works directly with lots of gas stations and convenience stores of our type. So this request is just to approve and sign the attached agreements.
Very well. And we are, if we take it up next, this does not require any more immediate action on our part. If we, you know, assuming passage next week, we are within the timeframe that you would be comfortable with.
Yes. We just need to get this and the DoubleCheck resolution passed, and we'll be set for that process.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
This really doesn't involve very much in the way of expenditures. I'm a little bit tempted to go to consent.
I'm fine with consent.
I'm fine with consent.
Very well. 2022-359 will appear on consent at our next meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2022-357. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-357 is approving ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance request form along with a task order agreement for professional engineering services for the Smithville Lake Waterline Study with Burns and McDonald, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. This resolution would just like to approve the oncology engineer, one of our oncologists, Birds and McDonald, to do a project and the waterline study project that we have already had approved with ARPA funding for stormwater infrastructure. And the cost of this study would not be more than $360,000, and it is for the study and design of replacement or other alternatives to our waterline, which basically feeds the whole east side of the lake, but there's two sections that go under the lake that have failed some, and basically, we're looking into the future and trying to have some idea of the best way to proceed if we do need to replace or somehow figure out a different way to get our water.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No questions, thanks.
No questions.
Since this involves expenditure of some funds, I think we're regular agenda.
Great.
Very good. 2022-357 will appear on our regular agenda at our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-358. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-358 is the consideration of approving quotes to upgrade the point-of-sale system in the marinas with DoubleCheck Company, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. This is basically just a point-of-sale system upgrade with DoubleCheck to work in conjunction with the new agreements and processes we helped have in place for this coming year for our marina stores and sales. It's just basically a software upgrade.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
I'm thinking of regular agenda, is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
Very good. Regular agenda for 2022-358. That brings us to number 2022-369. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-369 is consideration of approving ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance request form for stormwater infrastructure project for Brushy Creek at the northeast 137th Street, northeast 136th Street with CFS Engineering, and Terry Griffin, our Highway Administrator, is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Terry Griffin, Highway Administrator. This is a request to approve a proposal from CFS Engineers to design a safe and efficient road stream crossing, especially at the low-water crossing on 137th Street, as well as several other locations along that same corridor that flood. The project will provide resilient erosion control measures and prevent future damage to stream banks, and this is an ARPA stormwater project. The total cost of engineering for this project will be $199,000.
Very good. Questions or comments?
No questions.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Regular agenda for 2022-369?
That's fine.
I agree.
Very good. That brings us to our final item, 2022-368. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-368 is the consideration of approving ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance request form for stormwater infrastructure project for the branch of Clear Creek at Plattsburgh Road with Decker Construction Services. And again, Highway Administrator Griffin is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
This is a request to approve the proposal from Decker Construction to actually do the project, which will repair a damaged storm drain channel that blocks stormwater flow and is causing erosion on a protective bank in front of a residence. This will create a resilient, sustainable stormwater management solution using the ARPA stormwater infrastructure funds, and the total cost of the project is not to exceed $10,000.
Okay. Questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none. 2022-368, a regular agenda?
Great.
Very good. That concludes our regular agenda. Is there a motion related to our regular agenda items that we've just gone through?
I will make a motion to put 2022-370, 2022-357, 2022-358, 2022-369, and 2022-368 on regular agenda. Do you need me to list out all the consent, Commissioner? Do you need me to do the consent? Are you okay with just the regular?
You just say all remaining?
And all remaining items. There we go.
Very good. Motion's been made for the allocation of the regular agenda items on the consent and regular items as outlined by the Commissioner. Discussion? No further discussion, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to number eight, discussion items. We have one item on for discussion. Administrator?
Yes, this evening, we have Sheriff Aiken and Captain Agderian to provide an update to the Commission on the Law Enforcement Resource Center.
Very good. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Whoa, that's loud. I feel like when I'm over there, I'm yelling. Let me back up a little. No, thank you very much for the opportunity to come up. Sheriff Will Aiken with the Clay County Sheriff's Office. I have the opportunity to present to you the Law Enforcement Resource Center that we've been working on diligently for, it seems like, forever now. And so if I could turn, if you could turn your attention to the PowerPoint presentation, that is a rendering of the original structure that we had worked with the company and said this is, these are all the things that we would like to see, these are the things that we want. And so that was the rendering. A lot has changed, and I'll explain why here in a little bit, but that link on the bottom for the YouTube channel, it shows drone footage of the entire property, kind of like where you enter the property and to where you go over to the Law Enforcement Resource Center as the structure itself, as well as the different phases of the entire project. So if you look at this map, in relation to where Missouri City is at, it's just north a few miles, and it's really hard to tell, but where the pin is at, that's kind of, from what I see here, that's, it's either the entrance or where the actual facility itself will be sitting.
See the entrance.
Okay, I was just told that it's the entrance. And closer bird's eye view, if you look kind of where the driveway is on the lower left-hand corner, that's the driveway where you would enter the property, but if you were to, oh, I think this might work. Oh, there we go. Come around this way. This is where the actual facility will be, and then this will be one of the ranges. Over here will be a couple of other ranges, and then we've got future plans for kind of like a final phase of the entire project that would be down in this area. And that's what it looks like. Once it's completely built out, but like I had mentioned, this part is in a different Everything's controlled access as far as getting from one, basically from the facility itself to the range locations here and here. Whenever you have live-fire exercises going on, you want to make sure that you control the personnel or anybody that's moving on inside the, on the grounds, to make sure that everyone is as safe as possible. This is what the project looks like without that Phase 4. I'm just going back, that's what the, with the Phase 4, that's without. So this rendering here was what we initially had with everything that we wanted as far as what it would take in order to create a learning environment with all the training opportunities that we would have to provide, not only the Clay County Sheriff's Office, but law enforcement agencies in the region. Now, when I say "region," I'm not talking about just the Kansas City metropolitan area, okay, for our region. I'm talking about the entire FEMA Region 7, because this facility, there's no other facility like it. And when they drew this out, if you notice, up here, there's 10 lanes. That was with the intent of having an indoor range. We, the, the things that we could do with an indoor range, no matter what time of year it is, would be exceptional, but when we had to modify the project itself, one of the things that we had to sacrifice was that 10-lane indoor range. Now, we left schematics in there for us to be able to build that out at a later time, so instead of just building it without the 10-lane range, indoor range, and then having to rewire, put ventilation system and everything that would be involved in that, we're going to set it up to where all we have to do is just build it out, and it will be ready to go. So we're kind of, we're still planning forward. And then in the lower left-hand corner, that was a, kind of like a $400,000 right here, virtual reality system. Well, with technology, everything changes. Just go to sleep and wake up the next day, and there's new and improved technology. So instead of going with the virtus system, we're actually looking at virtual reality to the tune of about $50,000 to $100,000, as opposed to $400,000 and whatever it costs in order to maintain that system. So we were able to modify the layout of the facility itself to accommodate virtual reality as opposed to the virtus system. Here's what it would look like if we actually had asphalt parking lot, but who knew that parking lots cost millions of dollars? So we went with gravel. That sure looks pretty, though. Okay, so the numbers here, before I go into these numbers, what I want to do is kind of give some context in the background from when we first started the conversations of this project. When we were working with Bib, the contract company that we were working with for this project, I told them, here's everything that we need, working with Captain Brian Zap, Captain Amy Agderian, and some of our other team members. The result that came back to us was to the tune of about $13.5 million, and it was phenomenal. But when they were done with their presentation, I slid it back over the table, and I said, I will never take that to the Commission to approve. It's too much money. So with that, with that little bit of information as context, we went back to the drawing board, we cut some things out, we modified the project entirely, and what we came up with is $3.2 million for the actual building itself, $238,000 for the, let's see, let me follow the arrows there, for the 100-yard range, the, I'm sorry, yeah, 238 for the 100-yard range, 486 for the 250-yard ranges, and then the 1.55 million for the, all the civil work, which also includes the designer fees, civil work, gravel movement, everything else. And the total project cost, we were able to get it down to $6.9 million. So from $13.5 million down to $6.9, with the ability to grow at a later time. This next slide, I want to point your attention to these numbers right here. Can you see those? I'm just kidding. Well, really, the numbers, the column that I want to point out is this very last one. So with the Clay County Sheriff's Office team working with Diana, in, with the pro forma information that was given to us by the contract organization working with us on this, look at the color. From years one to '25, that category is all in the black. So as long as everything goes to plan, we will not have to put money into this project once it's built, because it looks like it will be sustainable. Now, I'm pretty optimistic that the information that we were able to use in order to come up with this pro forma and how much law enforcement organizations and other organizations would want to participate in this project, I'm pretty sure that not only will we be sustainable, but with the partnerships that we have with other law enforcement organizations, to include our federal partners, we will be able to build out Phase 4 and that indoor range, I would say, in the next five years, once it's done. Next steps, to get your authorization to start the project, police facility design sole source. We ran into a situation where Bib was bought by a company, I believe, out of Texas, and that company has no interest in pursuing this venture with us any longer. Oh my gosh, that could seriously set us back. However, Bib was working with a subcontractor who basically designs police facilities. However, Bib was working with a subcontractor who basically designs police facilities, and they have intimate knowledge of this project, they've been with us since day one, and they are capable of actually taking over this project with no delay in the project itself and to no additional cost. We just have to be able to sole source with them. If not, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board, go through the RFP process, and that'll set us back, I would say, not only time, but probably money as well. Competitive bid process for construction and then awarding of the contract, but the one thing that I, that we didn't put on here is the fifth bullet, and that is for all of you to show up at groundbreaking with your hard hats and shuttles. So with that information, I want to open it up for any questions that you might have, and I'll do my best to answer.
Thank you very much. It's very informative and something that obviously has been on the minds of a lot of us here in the county for some years now, so I'm glad to see it's taking shape. Is it possible for us to get the, a link to the PowerPoint and all that? So I'm sure it would be, but I just want to make sure the Commissioners get it.
We'll provide that. I can't imagine why you couldn't read all those members across that chart, but yes, we will get you a hard copy.
Committed to memory.
If your eyes are better than mine, then they are.
And also, so you can enjoy the link because it's a great aerial of the property and puts things in perspective.
Okay, that'd be great. How many participants do you think we're looking at? What is the total number of, I assume, officers? Because it's not, it's not going to be open to the public, it's going to be closed to law enforcement and people in that area, is that correct? Or is it open to the public?
So the ideal is to keep it within law enforcement or public safety. And I say public safety because fire and EMS may take the opportunity to utilize our facility, especially with the concept of a rescue task force when it comes to active shooter events, you know, where fire and EMS are starting to realize that they can't wait in the event there's ever an active shooter because the more they wait, more lives could potentially be lost. So as they continue with that concept of rescue task force, or RTF is what we call it, they could very well come out and use this facility too. But within the confines of public safety, that's where we want to start. Because if we start inviting the public to come in, then we have to start going back to maybe insurance liability, what does that look like, working with legal, risk management. Inherently, with any kind of facility that has a firearms range or component to it, you're going to have a higher risk liability, and we just want to make sure that we, we take all the appropriate steps to make sure we mitigate or lessen that liability.
No, I'm happy to hear that because that's my opinion as well, that we're better off, not just because of the fact of those, those items that you had enumerated, but we would be able to make more efficient use of it if you have trained officers who understand the process. I think we could, we could get more, more bang for our buck, so to speak, as far as the number of people that would participate. So we spend a certain amount of money, obviously, doing some of our certification, that sort of thing, with the county. Do you have any idea that by having this facility, how much, because it sounds like we're anticipating revenues from outside sources, but we would also be realizing internally some savings because we're not sending our, our officers to other places? Do you have any kind of ballpark on what kind of money we're talking about saving?
So if you look at row one and two?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I don't have that in front of me, but we did account for that. And it's not just the money of what it costs for our employees to go to training facilities, and really, they're not facilities. It's an open yard or open bank lot in Sugar Creek, or we have to drive all the way up to St. Joseph, or use Clinton County when the range itself isn't in disrepair, they had some issues up there. So finding, or North Kansas City, finding those locations, we know where they're at, but the hard part is we're competing with all the other law enforcement organizations that have to use it as well. And that doesn't account for how many new hires we all make. And I can tell you right now, we are all in the same boat, and we are hiring people, it seems, monthly if not weekly. So trying to get them certified on the range to meet the post standards, it's just, it's extremely challenging.
I think as we go through the process of post certification, I guess what I'm saying is also, we would realize some savings from, for instance, the, the travel time that an officer would have to take, say, going from here to St. Joseph, that's, that's another cost consideration, I think, that is not, while it may not be huge money, it certainly contributes to the idea that this is very cost effective. My other gut feeling is that, you know, since it's a Clay County facility, Clay County law enforcement would have sort of first, first dibs on the spots.
Absolutely. But you know, to your point, Commissioner Nolte, it's not just the deputies' pay, we have to think about the, the mileage and the maintenance on the car, we have to think about the overtime because they're already working their shifts, we're already short-staffed. So all those contributing factors go into that total amount.
The other thing, and I like this idea, I realize as a way to keep prices down, we are, we have the space available for the indoor ranges, but we would just maybe do those at a future date. So I like the idea that we are, are building with an idea of expanding the services and the availability, because you're right, we could run into weather issues, and I think that's certainly something we need to account for. And putting that in place right now while the equipment and the workers are, are on site, seems to be a much more cost effective way to go about this.
Something that I want to point out, I can't go into too much detail because it's still being in the works and it doesn't include us or the county per se, but eventually it will, and what we're looking at is projects from within Clay County and around Clay County, things that are happening that could potentially bring non-sworn employees who are armed and have to qualify in order to perform the functions and duties or responsibilities of their future assignments. So if that happens, that's probably the first step to bringing in non-sworn protection officials, if you will, to our facility and, and make sure that they're trained up to where they need to be at to meet the state standards.
But still, we're talking about dealing with people who are, are utilizing this facility in a professional capacity, not, not a recreational capacity?
Correct.
Good, that's a, it's a great way to go. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. Good to see you.
It's good to see you, sir.
First of all, thank you for the work, you know, that you've put into this, especially on, you know, trying to get the price down, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a big price tag, and you know, I know a lot of work has gone, not just by you, but others in terms of trying to get that lower, and so I'm grateful for that. You mentioned the Phase Four, do, do you have an estimate on that and how much that would cost?
We have it back at the office, but I don't, I don't have the exact number. Phase Four is kind of one of those luxuries, but Phase Four with that luxury, if we were able to bring it to our facility, that would open up more doors of opportunity for more federal partners to come in to do specialized training. Because really, what Phase Four is, is what we coin a shoot house. And if we have a facility designed where we can actually do building searches, we would build it in such a way that you can actually change the walls. So every time you don't, every time you go in, you're not seeing the same corners, you're not seeing the same hallways leading to the same bedrooms. So we would design it in such a way that we could move walls and change the structure of the interior portion of that facility. But, you know, timeframe, it's hard, it's hard to say, because what I would like to see is for us to be able to sustain this project, but then get additional revenue coming in from all of our partners to be able to, to build that out as well as the indoor range.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm wondering about in terms of, because you mentioned that you thought maybe within five years, you know, that you'd be operated in the black and that that could fund Phase Four, or would Phase Four require additional funding from the county?
No, I, I mean, I'm still optimistic about that with the, the ability to self-fund, the facility itself would be able to self-fund that Phase Four. And so Phase One, just for clarification, would be the facility itself, the 100-yard range, 50-yard range, 100-yard range being Phase Two, 50-yard ranges being Phase Three, and then the shoot house being Phase Four.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. And the first three phases are covered in the $7 million figure, right?
Yes.
And so the hope would be that whatever the cost of Phase Four is, is paid for by partners who are utilizing the facility and paying to do so.
Correct. And you know, I'll believe it when I see it, kind of approach to this, but you know, we've all heard the term or the, the statement, you build it and they will come, build it and they will come. We have a lot of federal partners who are eyeballing our facility, and they can't give us money to do this first portion, but what I've been led to believe is if we build this out, they have additional funding to, to help out with that additional structure because that is what they specialize in. So I'm hoping that once we get this built and everyone sees it, they come out, they experience it, and they see how well, how well it's ran, as well as the benefit that they see for themselves, that, that five years will become feasible.
Gotcha. So you're envisioning not that, the cost for utilizing the facility that they would pay, but that they would actually pay for the, the capital project itself, but they would actually say, Phase Four, we're going to pay the cost of this?
A portion.
Okay. And then, so is the idea then the rest of the portion is an additional future charge to the county?
No, the plan is to not have to charge the county at all. Like, the, the idea, the hope is to, for me not to have to come up to, before the Commission and ask for an additional X amount of dollars to build something out. Again, Phase Four is a luxury. With Phase One through Three, building it out the way it is, I mean, it's already self-sustaining, but the idea with Phase One through Three without our federal partners, the, just the money that we'd be bringing in would actually help build out the indoor range. And then if you look at years five through 10, beyond that, I'm fairly certain that we would be able to build out Phase Four, but I think once our federal partners and all public safety in the KC metro area as well as FEMA Region Seven, which includes four states, I should have said that earlier, they're going to see that and they're going to want a part of it. I will say that the, the level of interest has gotten all the way up to the National Tactical Officers Association, and they're eyeballing our facility now because our region.
What do you say, they're, they're eyeballing our facility? To use it, or?
Yes, yep. And they're the ones who bring in training courses, they bring in people from all over the country. It's the National Tactical Officers Association, NTOA. Right now, they use Camp Dodge, which is up north, a few hours, and the ease and accessibility for that location plus its aging status, they're looking at going somewhere else.
Gotcha. No, and, and that's wonderful, because I mean, the idea here, right, is that multiple law enforcement entities would utilize the, the space, right, and that they would pay for the ability to do so, right?
Yes.
Because, I mean, because I, you know, I'm certainly glad that lots of other, you know, whether it's federal or whoever, that they're interested and that, you know, that this appeals to them. But ultimately, I mean, it's, it's our $7 million that's going toward it, right? It's not them. So I'm, I'm trying to get a, just a better sense of to what extent they're going to be, you know, I get that they're interested and would enjoy using it, right? But to what extent they're, they're planning on helping to, you know, cover the costs so that it's not just all Clay County taxpayers who are, you know, paying for it.
Well, I mean, there, there are other things that we're working on as well, and we're actually in the infant stages of creating a regional tactical team. And with that regional tactical team, it's going to involve other cities because we're getting to the point now where, like I kind of mentioned earlier, we don't have the, the people who want to be in law enforcement anymore, so we have to combine our resources in order to accomplish things, not just for our political subdivision, but for our area of operation, which for many of the cities within Clay County, it's the entire county of Clay. But it's also when we get called out to Platte County, to Clinton County, to Ray County. So when we start talking about regionalizing assets, we can also start talking about what does training look like. So Clay County is not going to carry that, that burden entirely. It has to be shared with all of our municipal partners. That might come in the form of adding training opportunities to our location, our, our Law Enforcement Resource Center. So there's not only that, but like I said, National Tactical Officers Association, there are national trainers who are actually looking at our, our site, because those are the trainers where we send people to spending thousands of dollars to get that level of training, we would actually be able to bring them here, and it wouldn't cost us anything to send our people. So there are a lot of other factors, but the, the numbers that are up on the board, that's just what we know we can sustain right now with the information that we have. I've, I've talked with a lot of police chiefs who said, Will, if you build this out, can I just send you my people for you to train? I'm like, we're already running the range, so there's no reason for that, that law, that police department to have to take time out from their personnel paying overtime, the training in order to be a firearms instructor. They're just saying, if you'll do this for us, we will gladly pay for that, and it'll be cheaper for them, but we're already running a range. So this information here, ultimately ending up in the black in that very last column, that's just what we know with the information that we currently have. This doesn't include any of the what ifs. So that's why I'm pretty optimistic that in, in at least the next five years, we'll be able to not only sustain this, but we'll be able to build out the indoor range and potentially Phase Four.
Okay.
Without me having to ask you for any more money.
Yeah, no, that's, that's helpful to know, thank you. And so I would be curious just how much Phase Four, just if there's some, you know, estimate on what that is, but I, I know you don't have it with you now.
No, it's really easy, we already have the information. When we get back to the office, we'll make sure we send it on over.
Cool, cool, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Hi, yes, hi, thank you. So my questions, of course, are going to be kind of silly because I'm sure they're up here and I just can't see because I don't have the ability to read tiny, tiny words. But for starters, I'll say, there's no denying that this is going to be a tremendously impressive project, and we've had a lot of conversations about it, and I think it's going to be very exciting. But my question would be, is I know we talked about, so in five years, you're hoping the funding will come in, not only will it be self-sustainable, but also be able to help fund for Phase Four. When do you think the facility itself will be able to fund itself? I'm going to ask these questions because we're Commissioners and we, we just need to make sure we know where the money is going and how much we need to allocate every year. So, so I guess it's like, how much is it going to cost annually to run the facility? And when do you don't need us anymore to help find you the money?
So with the $6.93 million, we're looking at year one is going to be in the black. So the pro forma information that we've given, working with Diana, all the money that we currently use from our budget will be able to sustain operations starting year one.
Okay.
So a little, a little bit easier, so the third column from the right, the tan colored column, so those are items in their current operating budget that they believe they can reallocate, they won't need because they're affiliated with the similar services that we get other locations, and use those funds to help offset the operating costs of the new facility. So while we won't see a savings, we will do a cost shift. Now, those are direct costs that have been identified, and as Commissioner Nolte mentioned, there are certainly some soft costs that would be savings that we could benefit from. And I don't think in here is any overtime savings projected at all, you know, so there could be some direct savings to the law enforcement budget as it is now. But all of those years currently, if revenue rentals come in as projected and the expenditures are somewhat in target from what the consultant has indicated from similar facilities that they've been involved with, then each of those years basically are in the black.
Perfect. No, because as I said, I'm sure the answer is up here, I just can't see it. So once I can get ahold of that, I think it'll make, I'll, you know, I'll know all the numbers, so it'll be good. But no, I still think it looks like a great project, I'm looking forward to it being there, and you can all go out shooting, I think it's going to be good, I'm looking forward to it. My other question is, is and I, I guess it's more of a confirmation, so the property itself, we, we're leasing that?
So we are leasing that. That has already been approved by the Commission, and it was for a lease time period of 30 years and it cost the county $1,000. It's approximately 66 acres, and they said basically, you do whatever you want with it, within the confines of the parameters of the contract, or the lease contract. But we've been working with them for years with the area manager, and they welcome us out there because this is an environmental reclamation site. It used to be a landfill, but Republic Services is actually an environmental company, and they go out there and they want to make sure that no one goes out there and messes with the, the systems that they have in place to make sure that there's no seepage, leakage, all that environmental stuff. So they always, they've always welcomed us out there, but now being able to partner with them, it, it ensures that we are always going to have a, a presence there, and they don't have to worry about anyone going out there with ill intent to cause problems, environmental problems.
No, it seems like this, that's a good relationship, and we get a bargain, bargain of a deal there for, for the property. Do we know what happens after the 30 years? Do we know?
Perhaps renew the contract.
Hopefully, hopefully, okay.
I hope I'm still alive in 30 years.
Well, I hope so, okay.
But you know, the idea is if we're going to invest in this property, I can't imagine that we're going to start from day one and then 30 years not do anything else to it. We're, you know, we're talking about building an indoor range, we're talking about building Phase Four. Perhaps, because if you look, all the properties surrounding this property is still owned by Republic. And they may open up the doors of opportunity for us for some other kind of training, and, you know, we'll just continue to build it out. So I, that's what my hope is. Not just in 30 years, we just turn it all back over and say, you do whatever you're going to do with it.
Okay. And there's probably, there's not like a big chance they're going to get mad at us and be like, we're... and be like, we're canceling our lease or anything. I just, with the project this big, I'd hate for something, you know? And if we feel pretty secure moving forward.
There's no way I could say that they wouldn't get mad at us. I don't know why. They, the reason why they bought all the property up around this, this site is because residents have claimed over the years that they became ill, that they were having medical issues, and so what they did was they just bought the houses outright. And so now, they're, they're not going to sell them, it's just going to remain in their possession. That's why there's so much land around this, and I think Kip can actually answer to the, because I think we still have to do a survey or a study, not a study, but a, kind of go around to the neighbors, saying, how is this going to impact you, or something like that? Maybe I'm getting too, too far ahead of myself, Kip, I didn't mean to call you out like that. But we don't really have to worry about that, because all those houses were purchased. And, yeah.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of follow-ups. But one of the things that occurred to me is, this is not too dissimilar from the relationship we have at Smithville Lake with the Army Corps. We don't own that property, we lease it, the, I guess it's remotely possible, the Corps could say, hey, been nice seeing around, guys, we're taking over, but not very likely. I see this as being in a similar vein, to where they have no particular interest in, in changing the arrangement in any significant way. 30 years, you never know, but by and large, it seems to be like a, it, the arrangement will be one with enough stability to where that should not be a, a really, you know, pressing concern at this moment.
No. And I, and I'd like to point out that Captain Sapp has been working on this project for almost 20 years. You know, when we finally get this approved and built out, this is going to be one of those golden nuggets that we are going to make every effort to, to play well with the, the people who lease it to us, the, everyone surrounding the site, if there's still anything that's going on, perhaps Missouri City. But we're going to take really good care of it, and we're going to continue to build it out. And that's why, and my hope would be that after 30 years, it just continues to be an asset.
The other question I had was, I didn't see it, you may have covered it, but what are the personnel requirements to, to keep the facility going? And is that something you can absorb, or will you need new FTEs, or how does that look?
So the idea is to have five range safety officers out there. It'll be five sergeants, and the reason why they're sergeants is because the amount of responsibility. If we're going to have people out there using our ranges, our training center, we have to have somebody who has a little bit of authority that can be delegated to in order to make sure that everyone's operating safely as possible. That's something that we plan on absorbing initially, but I, I do have to point out, I think I've had eight deputies resign in the last seven weeks.
Wow.
And the reason for that is because we are just, we're not even competitive anymore with what other agencies are offering. For example, KCK, $70,000 starting for somebody who has three years of law enforcement experience. Gladstone, $54,000, starting right out of the academy. We're still starting at 41. Now, I will say, working with the, with Diana and the budget team, we're hoping to get at least a starting salary of $45,000 next year, but we're not even competing with that. So being able to absorb the range safety officers as full-time positions out the range, that might not be feasible for us right from the get-go, but we do have quality firearms instructors, and we'll just have to manage that with the schedules.
Good. Something you had mentioned in that was about tactical units. I'm assuming also that perhaps the Missouri Highway Patrol, because they have obviously different units throughout the, the state, have, have you got anything from them as far as interest on their part? Or do they have their own facility and they're kind of self-constrained?
I, I smile and I chuckle a little bit, because I think General Assembly in this last session was talking about giving the Highway Patrol about $100 million out of the budget to build a new training facility, as well as some other lab stuff, and, and I just don't know where they were at with that.
Well, you know, they could just, it sounds like if they could just spill a little that our way, we'd be good, we'd be in good shape.
Absolutely. We've got Region A, we've got, you know, H, and they can come over here and play.
Well, the governor was just here today, I should have mentioned it to him, I'm sorry. I should have been on, on top of that. Something else that, that crossed my mind was you were talking about tactical units, and something I wonder about, another, you know, not hard dollar cost, but another benefit of doing this is the ability, the platform for different law enforcement agencies within the county to work together, so that when there is, you know, God forbid, some kind of a, of, of, an emergency that requires multiple entities responding to it, that there is, there is a built-in kind of, already well-worn trail as far as working together. And so it would make what would be going on in the scene of an emergency a bit more smooth because of the relationship and because of the, a custom of working with one another in training, so that would transfer, I would hope, into real-life situations.
You're absolutely right. The time of a crisis is not the time to build relationships. Those relationships should already be built. And by working together, it just solidifies and strengthens our ability, capabilities to serve not just Clay County for the Clay County Sheriff's Office, or Liberty for the Liberty, the City of Liberty, but for every resident that lives within Clay County and beyond its borders if we're ever called upon. And this will help us do that.
And one of the things that I've obviously been on about, we've had a lot of discussions on this, and that is, it, the consolidation to, to the degree possible and practical between law enforcement's agencies within the county. What comes to my mind is what I sound like a broken record on, that's consolidated dispatching. While this is separate from that, it is kind of a general effort to establish county law enforcement is kind of the umbrella under which we are all operating and which will help to organize law enforcement, so it's much more effectively deployed as we go forward in these kinds of situations.
Absolutely. I mean, all we're doing is strengthening our capabilities, even with co-located dispatch. We're starting with Clay County, Liberty, and Gladstone. But there are other municipalities that are eyeballing the opportunity to move in, because we will be able to do so much more with a co-located dispatch, and even still with minimum, minimum dispatchers, minimum staffing for dispatchers. In that location, we will have six dispatchers who will all be connected on the same CAD system, the same 911 system, so now we'll be able to help out. You know, I, I used to joke, kind of seriously, but not, that our dispatchers don't even get a break to go to the bathroom. They have to rely on their partner. And sometimes we do have to operate with one dispatcher, depending on staffing. So what they have to do is call a deputy to come in, sit behind the console, and hope that a 911 call doesn't come in.
Wow.
So, I mean, it just, again, it strengthens our capabilities. We have co-located dispatch, we're looking at regionalizing other efforts, as well as the law enforcement resource center.
I, I think it's, yes, obviously something that we've talked about, you know, over the years, and it's, it's great to see it coming forward as reality. I guess the last question I have, and this is one that I don't expect a hard answer to, but that is, as we go forward, assuming we can go forward in, in as efficient a manner as possible, what is our, our very, very general timeline for being able to see actual, you know, bringing it online for service? I realize that's a, that's a very blue sky question, so I don't expect, you know?
If I can get back to you on that, that answer.
October 27, 20, yeah. I didn't expect that, but, but just a broad, you know, we're talking about a few years, we're talking about.
To be operational?
Yeah.
No, we're looking at probably the fall of next year.
Okay, good. I was, I was trying to give you a lot of latitude there, that's why it's a couple of years.
And the reason why we're able to do that is because it's not going to be a solid structure. We're not using cinder block. It's just going to be something that, I mean, really is kind of the trend across the country for law enforcement organizations, is you don't need a cinder block in this beautiful building. Even the rendering, that was a 13 and a half million dollar rendering, okay? It's, it's going to look nice nonetheless. I mean, we're going to have a professional setting where people come in, they're just like, wow, okay, this is legitimate, a legitimate training site. But we're able to do it under $7 million, and, yeah.
The thing is, because it is a needed, a, a, a need that has not been met as, as much as we, we would hope it would be, having it online as, as quickly as possible would be certainly something that would be very helpful. So I'm glad to hear that we're talking about a relatively short timeline.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any follow-up questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Yes, the next meeting of the commission will be a business session next Wednesday, November 9th, at 6:00 PM, here in the chambers. And that's all I have this evening.
Very good. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
I have no comments this eve, this, is it afternoon? It's afternoon. I have no comments today, thank you.
Well, thankfully, it's this afternoon, not this evening.
I've had a very confused day for me.